And Father Black, Councilman Croon with the plate.
Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy. You've been so good and you've been so kind. Lord, I ask you to continue to bless this city, continue to bless the leadership, oh God. Lord, let sweet communication about among this council member and this bodyguard. Cover us with your blood, oh God. Lift us with your love, oh God. Let that love run from heart to heart and breast to breast. Lord, we thank you right now, God. Lord, we need a financial blessing in this city, God, and I ask you to open up a door, God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Lord, let it shovel right now, God. Let it shovel right now, Lord. Lord, we thank you, Lord. Look on the sick and afflicted, God. And Lord, you continue to bless our ideas, continue to give us more knowledge on God, what we need to do in this city, Lord, to take this city forward. And we thank you for our mayor. We thank you for our mayor, and we thank you for every councilbody, God. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor, and we give you praise because they all belong to you. We can't do nothing without you, and we thank you right now, God, for giving us relief of COVID, God. Glory to your name, Jesus. Continue to bless our emergency department, continue to bless our police department. Continue, Lord, keep them covered, Lord. Lord, cover each and every one of them. And we thank you right now for our city, God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and praise God.
Amen. If you would, turn to face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just as for all.
You want to call this meeting to order? Mr. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor McClinton.
Present.
Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Attorney, City Treasurer Suter.
Here.
Counselor Cat.
Here.
Counselor Croon.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Hope.
Here.
Counselor Hudson.
Hudson.
Here.
Counselor Muhammad.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Present.
Counselor Mary.
Here.
Counselor Bruce.
Here.
Counselor Wheeler.
Here.
We got ten out of ten presidents. There was no bid openings, and I get a motion and second to approve the minutes. Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We're going to go to old business. City Attorney.
This is the second reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for Debele Towing, permitting an auto wrecker service in an I-1 general industrial district.
His rest for a second time. He'll be back on the agenda in two weeks for his final reading.
This is a O-two, I guess. Is an ordinance granting a special use permit for Sunbelt Car Wash Services permitting a car wash in a C-1 general business district?
That's read for the second time also. He'll be back on the agenda in two weeks for his final reading. We're going to go down to new business.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we read R-1, R-2, and R-3 by title.
Second.
Not R-3, that's.
Second.
Well, you can do it in there. I get a second. Would you, Counselor Croon?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. City Attorney, all ones.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the City of West Memphis to utilize federal aid transportation alternatives program funds.
I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's standing in discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Uh, I'm sorry, city clerk, would you get that number?
The resolution number 2254.
That's 2254. City Attorney, R-2?
R-2 is a resolution certifying the condemnation and removal of houses, buildings, and/or residential structures constituting a nuisance within the City of West Memphis corporate limits.
I get a motion and second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
In discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Mr. Clerk, would you give that one a number this way?
Resolution number 2255.
The number is 2255. R-1, Mr. Attorney, but I'm going to ask, can I get a motion and second to table it into June 3rd at our next council meeting?
R-3.
Uh, R-3, I'm sorry. R-3.
So moved.
Second.
For some reason, I thought we were going to table that indefinitely. R-3.
That's what you asked. He asked to table it indefinitely.
No, that, that, yeah, you are, yeah, I'm sorry. You are. Yeah, so I asked you to table it indefinitely. I'm looking at the wrong, uh... Can I get a motion and second to table it indefinitely?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tableed indefinitely. Now, permission request, I'm going to ask you all to table it into June 3rd, the next meeting, the permission for me to sign this agreement with Tower Ventures.
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's tabled until the next meeting. Committee reports, we're going to start with our public works.
Public works, we met on May the 4th. I don't have a good set of summary or minutes from the meeting because we have a position we have to fill. But, um, Miss Amanda Hicks did record it, so we got the recording of the meeting. So I'm just going to touch on the highlights. We talked a little bit about the RJN Group Contract, which is the stormwater mapping system. Um, and then Todd Peterson, the general managers at the Utility Commission, came over and presented us with a, um, a cost bid on the flood pond repairs, which we approved and moved it to, uh, in front of the council. And then the rest of the reports were basically the standard reports from Mr. Bonner and Amanda Hicks and James Jordan. And then we talked about all the tires that were picked up in the city. I think at that time, there were 672 tires that were picked up out of the city. And then I think the mayor made a comment that there were 400 more that were waiting to be transported out to the county for disposal. And that's basically the public works. I would like to ask Counselor Muhammad to talk about our last weekend, keep West Memphis clean, and, uh, which I thought went off very well with her guidance and leadership, so... Counselor Muhammad, if you mind.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much, Counselor Croon. We did have a wonderful day to clean our city. We had really great volunteers, had a lot of heavyweight names out there cleaning. Mayor McClinton came out, and of course, our city clerk, James Pulliam, is always there with us. We had Counselor Wayne Croon, who was there helping. Had Todd Peterson with the general manager of the utility department. He was really working and sweating. That was very impressive. And of course, my girl Patricia Lane, she's always there, hard and heavy at work. I, you can't, I don't think anybody can outwork her. And I would also like to thank Mr. Chamberlain, Officer Chamberlain. Before anyone got here, I was here around 7:00. He set all the tables and everything up for me. He did a wonderful job, and I thank him so much for that. We had Counselor Croon working. He and Mr. Mayor, they picked up a lot of trash along Walker Street. I'm sure they had a good time doing that. Got your hands pretty dirty, didn't you? And picked up a lot of bags of trash and debris. We had Mr. Tucker. He was there. He was the first volunteer to show up, a young man, up and coming. We are looking forward to watching him as long as we possibly can. I believe he has a really beautiful future ahead of him, and I don't want to miss anybody. We had Ms. Nikki Stewart from the West Memphis Utility Department. She said there was nothing else for her to do, so why not come and clean up? I was looking for her. She was way, way out there on Mayfair, way, way over there somewhere, cleaning by herself. And I thought that was very, very impressive, just give up your time and come and clean. Uh, had quite a few members from the West Memphis Police Department. We were cleaning. We cleaned all that water tower there on Barton. Uh, Mr. Peterson opened that up, and we went in there and got all that debris out of there. We did a lot that morning. We didn't stay until the full 12 o'clock hour because, as you know, it had rained a few days prior. And the Lord had basically, with the rain and wind, cleaned along the roadside pretty good. We had the real deal motorcycle riders that were out there cleaning. Uh, trying to make sure I got everybody. Uh, I can't call all of the names because some of them were like in groups. We picked up about 35, 40 bags of litter and debris. My children were there, Shalay, Candace, and Michael. I want to make sure I call their names in case they listen to this. You didn't call my name, Mom. I want to make sure I put that in there, and it was just very wonderful. I didn't see Ms. Hutchinson. Someone says she was there, but I didn't. I see her. I don't want to miss anybody because I want to let you know that we really appreciate all of your efforts and everything that we did. We were going to have more students, but I fail to remember that the night prior, there was graduation because there were a lot of students who had promised to come, but they graduated. And of course, I understand they retired from graduating and celebrating. But I'm very, very thankful coming out of COVID. We had about 30, 35 volunteers, and I thought that was really, really wonderful. So we're looking forward to, if not doing it in the fall, another year, God be willing, and it'll just get bigger and better again. We're going to revamp everything and just have a really beautiful, keep West Memphis beautiful. I encourage all our citizens to just clean. I went Sunday afternoon. I started cleaning a little bit more myself after my children gave me a Mother's Day dinner. It was so wonderful because I was fasting Ramadan on Mother's Day, so I couldn't eat. Therefore, they said, "Well, Mom, next Sunday is going to be your day." And they made a bid too, and I'm thankful for that. And after that, we cleaned a little bit. So I just thank everybody for everything that you did, and we're looking forward to better, bigger, and better. I missed your cooking, Brother Willis. We'll get you next time, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad.
I would say the dumpsters are still out, so if you got something you want to throw away, today's the day to do it. Do it this afternoon because I'm sure they'll pick them up tomorrow.
Counselor, are you sure?
You think they're going to pick them up tomorrow, Croon?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because everyone on, uh, on Barton and, uh, Barton and MacOllie?
Mm-hmm.
It's overflowing.
Counselor Monday, that when you're talking about the Mayfair, actually, they came and picked that up today. And what I did, I sent my sanitation guys out there to go pick up because I guess when they, when they pick them up, so much falls at the back of them. You know, so they went to get all them up so if some's still out, I'm going to make sure they double check tomorrow because they under no good leaves.
Matt, thank you for that, and also thank you for Wood Street. It really helped. Really helped on Wood Street. The patching they did.
Thank you.
Really helped. Thank you.
And the one on MacOllie, uh, he left, he put an empty out there this afternoon, and someone's over there right now cleaning it.
Okay.
Mayor, and who were, what, who actually put the dumpsters, those dumpsters out, the company?
Collection Brothers out of Marion.
Well, I, they were very attentive, and they called me to make sure that they were in the right area. They wanted to get in touch with Ms. Harris, and they wanted to make sure that we had them exactly where we wanted them. So I would like to publicly thank them for their.
They did a good job.
They did an excellent job, excellent job, and makes me certain that those dumpsters were in the correct area, so thank them.
You know, he stayed in contact with me on those dumpsters.
Yeah, I thought that was, he wanted to make sure that we were satisfied, so thank you.
That was Michael. Michael East was the one.
Okay, well, that's a great thing, just to call his name.
And that concludes that report, Mayor.
I'd like to thank Pastor Banks also with Methodist Church, Bethel. He was there helping. Everywhere we went, he was right there, so I want to thank him as well, Pastor Banks.
And we're going to move on to the Chamber of Commerce report. Uh, it was, they met on the, uh, May the 12th. Junior Leadership Graduation was that, was the 19th, I guess, yesterday at the ASU Mid-South. And, uh, they are helping coordinate the Freedom Fest with the A&amp;P Commission, and they will host the 74th Annual Chamber Banquet at the Civic Center, as we did last year, on August the 19th. So if you need tickets, contact the Chamber of Commerce and grab you a ticket. Again, it's going to be on August the 19th. And that concludes that report.
Utility?
Utilities. Brett Simms reported that they have gone 184 days since the last recordable injury and 568 days since the last lost time injury. And for people that don't, you know, think that, you know, they don't think that that's, that means much, but I'm going to tell you, one injury, one worker's comp injury can run you into the thousands and thousands of dollars. So, uh, they're doing a good job, um, running a pretty safe venture over to Utility Commission. Todd Peterson presented the personnel update. They had one new hire and no resignations for the month of April. They have 12 openings out of 83 budgeted positions, so they still got some room for hiring there. Uh, he updated the commissioners on the final fuel adjustment. We, um, April's fuel adjustment was, now, I'm going to break this down into cents, okay? So the April's fuel adjustment was added was 0.013908 per kilowatt, so... That's pretty low. I mean, I'm going to be honest with you. My bill that I get hadn't changed about $4, $5 a month. I don't know. I've heard other people say there's changed $200 a month, but... Anyhow, it's, uh, we're trying to bring down that 900 and something thousand dollars that we accumulated during that two weeks of snow and ice we had. Uh, the amount collected for April was $340,000, and the amount of sales for April were $685,000 and some change. Uh, the Mayfield adjustment is going to end up being a little bit higher. It's going to be at 0.020442, if you want to figure that out. And the amount collected, they're looking at the amount collected, it's going to be 358,000 and some change. Uh, they did approve, the commission did approve to hire F and A to do a design for the building around the new service pumps out at, um, the levee where the pond is, the collection pond is, and that passed unanimously. Uh, and that was the bid that was brought before the Public Works Commission, and we considered it to be moved up to the council for approval, so... And that concludes the utility report.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Hutchinson, A&amp;P and Personnel?
Yes, sir. A&amp;P met, um, on May 19th. The meeting, pretty much, we, old business concluded, well, old business was basically, A&amp;P Collections was getting, were giving, um, Mr. Jackson asked for permission to authorize, or to sign a contract for the warehouse space, um, select, selection of an architect that they're looking at for the warehouse. There was no, well, new business, the pandemic cancellations for the Civic Center. Those cancellations from last year were all rebooked, and I think Kim said that they're getting newer reservations, and things are picking up with business as far as the rental with the Civic Center. We had no funding request. Uh, Nick gave a communication report to the commission in terms of the traffic that comes through on our sites for the city. Freedom Fest will be June 25th this year, and I guess we'll have an opportunity to announce that again, but we did confirm that. And that pretty much concluded. We had a very short meeting. It was adjourned. And that was it for the A&amp;P Personnel Met, and I will get a full report forwarded, City Clerk, to you all for, you know, formal matters, but we didn't have a, well, the agenda is not quite ready, but we did meet on May 12th, and I'll give that information next month. And that's it for both of those reports.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutchinson.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Harris, fire?
I met on, uh, May 18th at 12 o'clock at the City Hall. I left my report, but I'm going to speak from what I know from my head, okay? I got Chief Clay out there. He can help me out. Okay? We have three firemen that will be coming out of school in June. And the main thing we talked about, and it's been an ongoing issue, is overtime. The firemen are, they're working over, so much overtime. And they feel, and when they was talking about it, I could see if they could just hire three firemen to fill up that overtime. It won't be nothing lost because the money's already being spent in overtime. So that's just another salaries. And they need a vehicle. They need a fat marsh of vehicle. So we're trying to see where we can find some funds, but that, keep, especially when they transferring back and forth to school, you know? They can use their own personal vehicle, then we could just pay them mileage.
That complete, sir?
That was the main thing we discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Airport Councilman Wheeler?
Yes, sir. We met this morning, 5/20/2021, at 8:00 a.m. The May Commission meeting highlights. It was approved by the commission for Charles Suter Jr., interim city treasurer, to oppose refinancing of the airport bond issue. Hangar number three rehab is still underway. It's approximately 75% complete. There's been a delay due to materials availability. The commission approved pending results from the independent cost analysis for Garver to proceed with submittal to the FAA, the Work Order for the North Apron Rehab Design and Bidding Services. And that's basically the highlights.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Wheeler.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Muhammad, did you want to speak on Keep West Memphis Beautiful, or you done that?
We did it.
Okay.
All right. I had no appointments, no presentation. I did have three announcements. Uh, first announcement is, you know, finishing in the black is very important to me. This administration has always been cautious. Now, we ain't been as hard with the, with the money as Mary Johnson, but I think we have been very responsible, and that meant a lot to me, that we are able to finish in the black. And I truly believe that we would do it once again this year with conservative spending. But I'm all, on top of that, I'm always looking at ways to save money. So I'm going to bring in, uh, our city treasurer, Charles Suter, to come in and speak on something that I met with them and some other company.
Good afternoon. The mayor and I met with Raymond James on trying to restructure, get some different bonds for paying off airport expansion. That was done a decade and a half ago. We still owe 2.2 million, $355,000 on this. And what Raymond James is helping us is restructure bonds to be issued, and it will give us an annual savings of $28,000 a year, which over the life of the bonds, which would be 17 years, would be a total of $400,000. And the rate that we're getting is a 2.3% interest rate, which is historically low. And we don't see it really going much lower with the inflation getting ready to start kicking in. We're looking at it trickling up. So the reason we brought it to you today is just for trying to get, you know, you to let us to proceed in dealing with Raymond James and get it down to where we have something exact to present to y'all. Because any day that, that we delay, the rates can change. So, you know, that way we can give you what the payments, what everything will be. But any way that we, they restructure right now, we're still looking at almost a 17% savings. So, you know, $400,000 savings.
Did it a motion?
Yeah, that, for us to keep, you know, to do further research and get Raymond James more involved and let him go to the next steps. Frank Morton had brought this originally, so what we're doing is just taking it from there because there is money to be saved with the dropped in interest rates.
Okay, so the motion would be that you would like to continue working with Raymond James?
Yes, sir. On behalf of the city.
On behalf, yeah, on behalf of the city to reduce the interest rate?
Yes, sir.
And have some savings for the city?
Yes, sir.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
We need a second.
A second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, all.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
The second thing, if you all have noticed, that this administration has been working to do a lot of revitalization around here in the city to try to address a lot of the needs that you all, we have all that one time have talked and talked about. And I definitely have been working in several different areas. The first one, I want to say, Mayfair. If you look at the property in Mayfair, which is in War 4, you see that we gained possession of that property after so many years. And I knew when I was a councilperson with Ms. Muhammad, we fought for years, you know, to get that property taken care of. But now we have gotten that property, took possession of it. We have cut the property, uh, we have placed wood chips down. If you should go by that, now you'll see utility department cutting all the trees down. And our goal is definitely to try to get some of those foundations up so we can possibly in the future. It's not now, but looking to see how we can develop some, uh, affordable housing or something in that area because the people that have been suffering and wanting to ask for it gone for the longest. And, uh, Councilman Mary and Councilwoman Muhammad, you can tell me it's finally gone, and we do get possession of it. Secondly, I'm thankful that you all approved R-2 because we got some buildings on Broadway that have been condemned, just been sitting there a long time. And in order to make our Broadway look better, we have to address these issues. And it's the, it's the building on the corner of H Street and Broadway, the building on the corner of N Street and Broadway, the building that's in between ones, and I think the Britishian friends, as well as the building right there on the railroad that's been dilapidated for so long. Now, you know, everything I do, I try to come up with a way to pay for it, to make sure we have our money to do that. I came up for a way, and once we get those bids back, we're going to present to you all the new way. And hopefully that you all will agree with it and feel as strong as I do about getting Broadway where it need to be so we can be proud of it again. I mean, with our fire stations, the new school that's coming there with our parks being developed, and just be a small businesses painting, doing all the things they're doing with the collaboration of Main Street. I really think that we can make our Broadway be definitely what we hoping it to be, so, um, we doing it as well. Also in War 5, uh, Ms. Harris, I mean, Councilwoman Harris, I'm sorry, and Councilman Willis, you all have seen how I've been working with the derbies, and thanks to you all that you all did, waited leans for that street, that we have been, they have been turning down those trailer parks over there that have been ISO for so many years, especially when you have, I, I don't mean to be biased, but right, right now, current today, Jackson's Wonder is the best looking school in our city. And then when you got a school like Wonder that's coming, that's going to be part of the biggest imprint since our high school, and the design they doing over there, it really needs to have, uh, and the, the look need to be great. And them trailer park does not help it, and we have been working with Tim, with the housing authority. We're going to meet with him again, you know, to provide, uh, Section 8 vouchers, if possible, to some of those individuals, if we are able to take possessions of some of them. But that's, that's a little, a little bit down the road, but we doing things to try to clean up that trailer park to make sure they look presentable to people. And War 1, Shady Grove, finally going to Shady Grove, and there's only so much we can do. We know we can't play sidewalks because we know the condition in the streets, but it is some houses that need to be torn down in that area, and I'm going to continue to work with Paul and that department to make sure that we can use community development block grant money to get those houses torn down, and it's lots that's been neglected. And I definitely don't want them people to feel like they're not part, they hear it's West Memphis. I think those are things that we can do. And I'd like to announce, thanks to you, you guys. This administration, during this, uh, during this administration, we have torn down more houses in the city of West Memphis than any other time. Give you all a couple of applause for 89 houses that you all have torn down in the city. So all over the city, even though COVID has affected us, different things are happening, we still are making strides to beautify West Memphis, not just on one end, but all over the city. And it's going to take a little time. It's going to take some creative spending. You know, I know the Broadway thing, I got to create a way. Uh, I don't know if there's a time to tell it, but I just be quiet about it until I get ready to do it. But I just think there are going to be some great things that we are going to be able to do, and we're going to be willing to address all the issues without, throughout your war. You know, some, some wars need more than others. So, uh, definitely, we're going to continue doing this. And my last announcement, for the last three days, I've been meeting with, uh, some, with people from some form, or R-Dot, T-Dot, uh, state representatives, senators from both states, going back and forth. uh, state representatives, senators from both states, going back and forth about this bridge. But today, they gave a young man an opportunity with a microphone today at the Memphis, uh, Chamber of Commerce. And I had the opportunity to meet with, uh, Ms. Tudor from R dot, as well as, uh, the gentleman from T dot, as well the US DOT, uh, the, uh, the young ladies from, uh, Secretary Bootycheck Office to talk about what we doing. And one of the things I explained to them is that this I forty bridge crossing is not just hurting West Memphis for with travel. It's really affecting us within our quality of, quality of life and affecting our income. See, you have to look at, uh, West Memphis holds the crossroads of America. I forty and I fifty-five. Over sixty-five thousand vehicles travel our city a day. Now, can you imagine that all that travel is being diverted to one bridge with two lanes? Do you know the impact that that causes on our city where you do have some trucks going down streets that shouldn't be going down? Can you imagine trying to get on a Broadway or on Dr. Martin Luther King or on one of the other exits? It's hard for our city. Uh, the bridge being turned, the bridge being cut off, it hurts our economic, uh, our economy, I'm sorry, with Southland being affected. I hear from Chick-fil-A and told me they hit a fifteen percent decrease because many of the people in downtown Memphis, guess what? They don't go all over Memphis looking for Chick-fil-A or go from grocery stores to Walmart. They come here to shop. That hurts our economy. Okay, we had an incident of a road rage yesterday where, uh, individual shot a truck driver. And to get, first of all, that took all our resources away from our city. Then the time it took for them to get to the, uh, to the issue, then to help him, we tried to airlift him, but found out that the traffic was so tight and so big, them so long that we can't even airlift him. Then we had to take another officer to help, officer to try to help escort that person through all this trouble. And just imagine if that were one of you all's mothers or, or children who had a heart attack or something. These are the things happening. So what I explained to them was, not only did we need ATVs for our police department and our fire department to get to the emergency on the bridge, which, uh, we don't wanna pay for. We want you all to pay for it because I think that this is, this is a federal crisis that through all this money that's coming to the city, our life of government. I'm gonna ask tomorrow, have a meeting with, with, uh, US DOT and R dot and T dot tomorrow. I'm gonna ask Governor Hutchinson where he releasing money to Arkansas to help with our general fund. Because that is being affected. I wanna make sure that we get more than the amount of money that we need. You know, but it, it, it impacts us. Why not? Because like I said, Memphis is being impacted. But one thing I did learn about Memphis, and Steve and, and Nick is my witness, but after I got to speaking, you had from all the trucking companies to New Core, to Meryl Strickland, everyone sided on our side. And they even said they want us to get a flag over that because we should be standing where they standing. Because they recognize West Memphis. But we're saying that they all agree that as much as we need the Mississippi River for travel, we got something that they don't have. And guess what that is? Say it again. I forty and I fifty-five in you all's backyard. And once we get past it, I know it's gonna take a little time and, and everything costs money. But I want us to realize what we, we have a jewel that we have to take advantage of. And once we maximize it to a full capacity, you're talking about winning streak. My momma said, hey, we, we there. So that's, um, we, we gonna, we gonna make that work. But I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, they tell me no, I don't think they can do just say no. And I learned that a closed mouth won't get fed fast. So tomorrow, I'm definitely gonna be asking them what, what type of ways. Also, they're gonna be bringing signage to make sure people know how to get on, uh, utilize our South Loop and different streets and directions and different things like that. So I'm glad that we did have an opportunity to get their attention. I'm glad from the support from Memphis that came for it. So they says another couple of months. I gave them a suggestion on the bridge, hopefully they follow that, but we'll go from there.
Mayor Clinton, what about, you, you and I had spoken, um, earlier about getting some note through traffic signs? A lot of these big trucks are going through our neighborhoods.
Al, already in progress. I mean, they got the dumping signs up and made sure that you ride some of, some of the side streets. And probably didn't get all of them, so you all recognize the area. I get the sign department to get the sign made up and get them placed up. Because the worrying terror in our streets, getting to Broadway, and I know Broadway's a state highway, but, I mean, when I was coming from X League, when I was going to the Memphis Chamber, a ten-minute ride to Memphis took us an hour to get through the traffic. And if we came back, I had Nick to record the traffic from the bridge. He would back up from, from the bridge all the way down Broadway to Ingram Street. And that didn't even include the interstate backed up to back over Missouri. So, uh, something need to be done. I think it's a national disaster. And like I tell, told them, they affecting the, the effect of the bridge, but we affecting just with the night everyday lives.
Mayor, if I may, I got, I just got two questions.
Sure.
Okay. What, is there anything that we can do with our local merchants on, on the price gouging? They know that it's so hard to get fuel over here. And the fuel's gone up this year already over a dollar a gallon. I mean, it's up to two, two eighty, uh, today. Do what now?
Only thing I can really do, I, I would ask the question, I mean, I know from the city, the city level, we don't control those prices, but...
Well, that's, that's the Americanized way. I mean, you get a shortage and you, you have a short demand, but then you jack the price up, so.
Well, the Attorney, the Attorney General, you know, is the one that goes after people for that. And I think there's something in effect that the prices can't go up in certain times over ten percent, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, well...
So they can't do it all in one day.
Yeah. Well, no, yeah, I know, I've been watching them, it's incremental.
It is incremental.
About every week, every week they go up ten, fifteen, twenty percent. I mean, ten, fifteen, twenty cents.
We're up a dollar or five from this time last year.
Just keep your car full. That's what I've done.
Well, you can, but... And, uh, the other question I had has to go back to the, the land bank, you know? I think it was, uh, Mr. Paul Luger had called the council and said, hey, you may be getting a phone call from these consultants. Well, I never got a phone call from a consultant, which is okay. But I was wanting to know if, if how the land bank worked and, uh, you know, our city clerk has been talking about that. I know for, since I've been on the council, but how, did, did we have to fund any of that? Do we had to buy any of that, or?
No, but actually, we, we had to pay a small fee for taking title possession. Like, guess what we paid for Mayfair?
I got no idea.
Three hundred dollars.
Okay.
But the two hundred thousand dollars in liens, guess where they was? And then there was ours. So we was able to get it, to get it that way. The properties that's over in the trailer park, a lot of them are owned by the developer who is doing the development. So really what we are doing is just making new step up where they probably should have done a long time ago. But they making it ever better. Uh, house and tearing down the house, that's something that we've been doing and we will continue doing that, but...
So basically on this land bank, we pay a fee, uh, probably for the license or the research or the title research or whatever.
Yeah, the quiet ti, you know, getting the quiet title and, and to get off and stuff like that.
We, uh, waive their, their liens, is that, what, is that basically what we do?
Well, you know, if you got a property, just hypothetically, and it got over five years or so of taxes, and it's getting ready to go up for auction, you know what I'm saying? We may get it for a dollar. City clerk?
Well, the land commission, which we have a new land commission now, but they had said that they would actually work with the city when it comes to acquiring the land. So that's probably what we need to do is just contact the land commission and just see, you know, what their approach is on it because they did say that they will work with us on it.
It, uh, Paul's not here, but I think that I saw him, uh, where they were gonna try to set something up. Try to work with this, uh, uh, some consulting type stuff with regard to that too.
And we did reach out to him, Mr. Land, that's his name.
Yeah, the new one.
Yeah.
Now, because of the zoning over there, with the zoning not changing, it stay the same, right? The zoning?
That my for, where the property at?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I do wanna add though, I mean, you all decide what the zoning is, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because right now it's, uh, I guess it would be multi-house development.
It's just no different than building a subdivision, right?
Yeah.
So I sat through the meetings the other day on the land. And it's good, it's good for what they're doing it for. And when we start going to distressed areas, this is the best case scenario, especially for us. Because these, these houses, they said about the average, it'll be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, now who, 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 does an independent contractor do that?
Yes, sir, they can.
Okay, so the city...
This right here happens to be a developer that's doing that.
So the city requires it through this, this land bank? And then a developer comes along that's interested in it? And they develop it?
Yes, sir. But we're gonna try to keep all the costs down and see if there's anything that we can do to supplement. People, you know, lower the cost of the housing. Looking at everything. We just had one meeting. So this is as far as we got on that. But that's just almost like it's almost an independent subdivision.
Well, I mean, it looks...
All new houses instead of, you know...
It looks like it's become a, uh, the slide, uh, the supply and demand, there's not much supply out there for, for single housing right now. And the pride, which is, I guess, okay, but it's driving the price of the single housing up.
Yes. Especially with outside investors buying up our houses to turn around or flip and they don't live here.
Yeah.
That's causing the price to increase.
Mayor, I have a question. Um, on our, um, our glass cutting. We got some lots that scrolled up real high and I know we working on doing our own thing, but uh, we're gonna have to do something real, you know, real soon because it's...
Well, actually, we in the process of doing that now as well. Um, matter of fact, I think Mike and them have already started cutting some of them, you know? I was gonna bring these up earlier, and I want you all to think about them and be quick, I'm not gonna hold this up. I got one thing real quick. But so, our lot, the color lot was so low. And what we did, we allowed people to come in and say, hey, it's cheaper to let the city cut our lot than we deal with it. Now, I'm asking you all to take a real look at raising, upping that price, I guess give the city a turn at first to make sure we're not doing anything illegal. So we, we, we gonna cut it, we gonna really get paid. But when you cutting lots at twenty-five or fifty or something to that standard, I won't misquote, and you just charging fifty dollars and then what, we get a five dollar fee off that? We responsible for that. You know, we letting they go. So it's time that hopefully we give the city a turn and pause off and look and say, hey, we can get that price up and say, hey, now I'm gonna keep my yard cut, 'cause I don't wanna be paying a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five dollars to cut no lot. You know, because what they doing, they let us scroll it up. And then when you saying, hey, we cut it two times, I mean, we paying on a hundred dollars. That's cheaper than what they really did. So those are some things that we can look at.
I forgot to say something, uh, when I was doing my report. The, uh, firemen that's working overtime, they are hurting. And they're complaining about it because they don't have no time off. So we need to come up with something to hold our firemen. Because we had one to leave this, uh, leaving next week. So we need to come up with some type of solution to cut out all this overtime and so we can hold the firemen and keep them from transfer. Okay?
Well, how many firemen are short right now?
Huh?
How many are, are they short?
Three.
Three. I'm gonna make a statement. You know, I've always thought it was the salaries that, uh, that kept people. I'm not so sure that's altogether it. I think sometimes it comes from the management at the top, where they handle the people that's working under them. I owned a business for a long time. I treated people right. When I, when I got on to them, it was on the, on a basis where they understood. I was, I was very calm with it. We explained it. And I think sometime we need more of that from our management.
It's not, I don't think it's that, um, Mr. Hope, it's we just don't have the manpower. And somebody got to fill the slot. And you get, you're required to have so many firemen there on each fire department. But I don't think it's that, that's where the overtime coming in.
Chief, would you come to the mic and explain the situation to them? To keep, and I know he, he'll do a better job of explaining it, but to keep our rating, uh, we have to have so many firemen on the trucks, so I'll...
Yes, sir.
Give the floor to you.
Good afternoon. Uh, just to speak to, I guess, Councilman Hope. Our issue with our low morale right now isn't really at the top. Uh, we've been had this problem for years. Uh, a lot of the issue right now is we're, we're having to mandate some of these firefighters because of the fact that we are first responders. And being first responders, we have to have fire protection and we have to have EMS. So when the rotation comes around with us not having enough firefighters, it's making those guys have to work forty-eight, seventy-two shifts. That's what's bringing the morale down because we don't have enough people. And I've been having this conversation for the last six months that a lot of our problem is we have no firefighters to fill in for guys that are sick, that are on vacation, that may be in class. So what that does, that makes the people that's at work have to stay over and we have to mandate them. Make it mandatory, they can't go home because we have to have people on those trucks. That's the morale problem.
How do you interact with, with your employees?
I don't have a problem with employees.
That's deep to it.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, hell, hold on.
No, that's not it, that's not it.
Chief, can I ask you?
Who's in school right now?
But, but let me, let me, let me say this real quick.
They'll be coming out in June.
Um, my last thing when we get out of here, I know you all heard about a lot of shoe in West Memphis.
What's up, man?
And I can't get into it because it's confidential, but you get ready to start seeing some things real soon.
Well, before you, on that note, because I was gonna ask you if we could come up with some different strategies to kind of curb some of the things that are going on. I would want to talk about some things that I know I feel like would help because I work in law enforcement as well.
Sure.
But for safety reasons, if nothing else, we have to do something because we have people in the community that can't leave the house or afraid to leave the house. I mean, houses being shot up in, people are driving through the neighborhood, and a lot of this happened in the war too. So I'm very interested in seeing something happen.
Well, definitely, I get with you, you know, I don't wanna do it.
I'm, I'm fine.
Uh, but definitely when a, a house with a seventy-year-old grandmother and, and eight kids get shot in and one little girl get shot in the arm, you know, that's definitely upsetting. And we did have our second murder in West Memphis, which is very disturbing to me because I got explained to them, they don't understand how to expect new business coming to city, just the perception of our city. But I, I asked you, you are respectful, let's have that conversation off, off the air. And Chief, thank you.
Chief, Chief Lee, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have, how many applicants, applications do you have on file for firefighters?
Excuse me, say again.
About how many applications do you have on file for firefighters? Ms. Harris said, someone said that we need three.
Yes, we is asking for, uh, three extra firefighters to give a little relief to these guys that, uh, what happens is we pretty much have enough firefighters to staff the trucks. Y'all giving us that. But they didn't give us any firefighters for people being on vacation or people being sick or being away in class. We need to have somebody to be able to relieve those guys when they don't come in because we have the minimum amount of people to staff the trucks. That's the issue.
Right, what I'm asking is, as far as applications, how many do you have that you, in your, in your application pool that you may be able to pull from?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We have sixty-two firefighters and paramedics all together. But we need nineteen a day in order to run a shift.
How many applications do you have? Do you have?
Uh, we have plenty of applications. I mean, that's not a problem. We don't have the positions.
School.
Yeah, we don't have the positions, applications. We have people that want to be firefighter, we got a stack of those. We don't have the positions to put them in.
Did, whatever you did to three station, did that pull from another two, you're down to three now? Did that help with, with the, uh, manpower?
No, because we just moved a problem. I mean, we still have a minimum amount of people. We still had the same amount of trucks and the same amount of ambulances. We just need some more people in order to fill in the gap when these guys are on vacation or they, or they calling in.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved, so moved.
Officer Ba?
Thank you, Chief.